All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's regular City of Cedar Falls City Council meeting for Monday, August 18th. Call is meeting order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Lada.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hallbaker.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and if you're willing and able, could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Look for a motion to approve the meeting of August 4th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? I'll say none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
Item number 12 of the consent calendar is being removed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I believe they're rescheduling that event, so didn't need that for this meeting. And then we will now move to public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? Just name an address, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Ryan Hall, address 209 Park Gate Road, Cedar Falls. I'm joined by my helper today, Annie. I am the head of school for Cedar Ridge Christian School, and here to share an update on our progress, as well as an invitation to city council. We acquired the property back in December, and since December, we have put in nearly a million dollars in improvements into the building. We're excited to welcome students here in about six days. We're expecting about 400 K through 12 students. We also are excited about about 70 employees that are preparing to start the school year. We are doing a ribbon cutting on September 5th, Friday, September 5th, at 11:00 a.m. That'll be a 15-minute ribbon cutting, and then tours of the school for anyone that is interested in seeing some of the things that have happened to the old high school. So thankful for city council and your work, and we are very excited to be a part of the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thank you.
That was September 5th at 11:00 a.m.? Correct. Okay.
And it's Dr. Dr. Hall, excuse me. All right, anyone else for a public forum this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move to staff updates. We've got a few. Oh, yep, go ahead. Just name the address, please.
Kim Jordan. All right. First of all, we're going to do kind of a role play. It's 9/11. We are under attack, and we need to be prepared. So you and I are all at the new location out on Green Hill, Mercy One. There's one way in, Green Hill Road, and all of a sudden, there's a wipeout of 27, Highway 27, and Hudson Road. We are within that area, and there's no activity going on. The communications are out, it's a certificate of need, we're a beacon throughout the nation, and all states are under an attack. We are creating a lot of facilities that only have one way in. The high schools, we have two prominent locations. Probably the best marketing advertisement needs to go in to that 1015 Division Street High School, because there's access points all the way around. There's also 515 College Street, a site that council back on February 5th of 2024 was contemplating running into an R3. It was on an E status, which carries kind of an untouchable. It's classified for medical and education, and yet it's something easily able to be moved. Now the water's off, and we're all wondering what's going to be next. There's no way out, we have an airlift light out on 1015. Probably too small of a build at Green Hill. We haven't seen the design plans, we don't know even when they're going to be able to do it. Prepared is we have the building. $1 million into a high school right now to get some things updated, and no capital improvements to date since 2011, if I look back into the Black Hawk County online records. We have not been taking care of what we've got, and we've had an old agenda that really needs to be revisited, with different concerns that are coming up with our administration and kind of direction. And I agree, we need to keep more of our personal rights, but we need to feel protected as well, and our points of entry are critical. Surrounding communities, we, we have to abolish the conflict of interest by honoring the oath to duty to protect the needs of all by partnering with one or another healthcare system is not acceptable. We need to have our own healthcare system, and we don't partner with the monopolies that are making a nationwide agenda to remove some of those emergency sites certificate of needs. I'm asking that we protect, we do not let Ryan Meyer and Mercy One at all take as a removal to a repositioning at Green Hill. That site needs to stay in the 112-year established emergency need. We have the best interest of the citizens of the city and the surrounding counties in mind. We need to have the city, the counties, the state, and the country, but also the nation in mind as we establish and build a new healthcare system to serve the people here in this area at that site. Removing competition is not really on the table. It should be no monies into removal. It needs to be looked at for taking that trust money. Second ask is that we get rid of that board and give them to the new Mercy One over on Green Hill, and reestablish a new board, that is, having people of no interest except to serve that area, to utilize the money. And we also need to have representation of someone that has some maintenance that they can do. Our community, Cedar Falls and Waterloo Property Taxes are coming due September 30th, and we cannot let another brother, like in 2022, the Schweitz Hospital, go down on our watch. Unfortunately, Waterloo was unable to save that. We have not lost Sartori yet. We have the foundation monies, and we need to get them appropriately replaced. If the city council and us decide that we're going to neglect the partnering with the health, if we do partner with the healthcare systems for promises of medical needs and services, we are having taxation without representation. We don't even get a say in the matter of rebranding the four times.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Sir, anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move to staff updates. I believe we've got a few quick ones. Director Robenbeck or Sheets, whichever wants to go first.
Mine's an easy one. Just want to remind people that our next council meeting is on a holiday, Labor Day, Monday, September 1st, so it will be on Tuesday, September 2nd, so you'll want to tune in then. But I did verify with the city clerk that the packet will still be available the Wednesday before, like it normally is, but we will be on Tuesday for our next meeting.
Thank you, Director.
And before we get to that meeting, we have Doggy Dip happening at the Falls, so we wanted to announce that. It's sponsored by Community Bank and Trust. This marks the 25th year for Doggy Dip, so help your pups make a splash at the Falls and come on out on August 25th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is a $5 cash admission that allows the dog and one owner to come in, so please feel free to come on in for the last day of summer at the Falls.
I believe it's $5 for additional.
That's correct. Yep.
Thank you, Director. And that will move us to special order of business, item number two, public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the 2025 Bridge Maintenance Project. We have motion received and file approved publication.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, and Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and for staff comments, we've got Matt Tolon. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Tonight's public hearing is for the 2025 Bridge Maintenance Project. This project involves a repair of various items on five bridges within the city. The specific areas of work are at West 18th Street, where it crosses Dry Run Creek, Cottage Row, where it crosses Snake Creek, Main Street at the Cedar River, Center Street at the Cedar River, and at the Mayor's Pedestrian Bridge along Highway 58. The total estimated cost of construction of this project is $460,000. The project will be funded by the Street Construction Fund. Thank you.
Any clarifying questions for men at this time? All right, thank you, Matt. And any public comment on this item tonight? Just name, name and city, please.
Kim Jordan, Cedar Falls. Do we get bids from the DOT? Because they've just completed some projects on 218 and have done a pretty decent job. Just not.
We can get you some follow-up, Matt.
That would be nice. I still haven't heard anything back about the Benton's cost on Union Road for the removal. Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder on that, too. Anyone else for a public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion on resolution approving and adopting the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the 2025 Bridge Maintenance Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I showed earlier, but Matt, could you clarify the beam of the steel railing repair over the Main Street Bridge, is that replacing or rewelding some spots?
The Main Street Bridge has a few different components, but as far as the railing component, it is a remove and replace with a concrete element down to abutment, and then it's a new steel railing that has to go in.
Okay. Cool, thank you, sir.
And might be a Jen or Brian question, just quick clarify, we did do an open public bid process like this, as per required for every project? Yep, thank you. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Move to item number three, public hearing on the proposed authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $11 million sewer revenue capital loan notes. So we have motion received and file approved publication.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, and then for staff comments, we've got Tyler Griffin. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's public hearing is on the proposition to authorize a loan and distribution agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $11 million of sewer revenue capital loan notes to pay for costs associated with the design of the water reclamation improvements project. As you're all aware, this project has been in the works for several years, and Strand has just completed our facilities plan. On July 7th, 2025, council approved a professional services agreement with Strand for the design services relative to these improvements. In order to finance the design portion of the project, the Iowa Finance Authority through the State Revolving Fund offers a three-year, no-interest planning and design loan, which will eventually be rolled into a low-interest construction loan upon bid acceptance. The required public notice was published in the Courier on August 7th. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions at this time? All right, thank you, Tyler. And any public comment on this item this evening? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan, Cedar Falls. Do we get bids from the DOT? Because they've just completed some projects on 218 and have done a pretty decent job. Just not.
We can get you some follow-up, Matt.
That would be nice. I still haven't heard anything back about the Benton's cost on Union Road for the removal. Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder on that, too. Anyone else for a public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion on resolution approving and adopting the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the 2025 Bridge Maintenance Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I showed earlier, but Matt, could you clarify the beam of the steel railing repair over the Main Street Bridge, is that replacing or rewelding some spots?
The Main Street Bridge has a few different components, but as far as the railing component, it is a remove and replace with a concrete element down to abutment, and then it's a new steel railing that has to go in.
Okay. Cool, thank you, sir.
And it might be a Jen or Brian question, just quick clarify, we did do an open public bid process like this, as per required for every project? Yep, thank you. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Move to item number three, public hearing on the proposed authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $11 million sewer revenue capital loan notes. So we have motion received and file approved publication.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, and then for staff comments, we've got Tyler Griffin. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's public hearing is on the proposition to authorize a loan and distribution agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $11 million of sewer revenue capital loan notes to pay for costs associated with the design of the water reclamation improvements project. As you're all aware, this project has been in the works for several years, and Strand has just completed our facilities plan. On July 7th, 2025, council approved a professional services agreement with Strand for the design services relative to these improvements. In order to finance the design portion of the project, the Iowa Finance Authority through the State Revolving Fund offers a three-year, no-interest planning and design loan, which will eventually be rolled into a low-interest construction loan upon bid acceptance. The required public notice was published in the Courier on August 7th. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions at this time? All right, thank you, Tyler. And any public comment on this item this evening? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. Okay, so we've been borrowing against the sewer account for years and years. Back in 1997, we had given up the Sartori Hospital per Richard McAllister's approval because of.
Ms. Jordan, please keep this specific to this project.
It, there have been, one clarification on where the interest-bearing monies have gone from the monies that have been placed in there. We've had a Bell's Farm Trust that's 352 acres that we're adding $80,000 of farm incoming, expecting.
Ms. Jordan, this isn't relevant to the loan note that we'll be taking out here, is there something relevant to the state revolving loan note that we're looking at?
It's the fact that the Health Trust Fund monies are sitting in the sewer account.
This, this program, this item is not related to the Health Trust Fund.
Okay.
So we can't have you speaking on that item.
Okay. Just making sure that.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there any other public comment for this item tonight? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion for resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $11 million sewer revenue capital loan notes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and discussion from council. Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Moves us to item number four, public hearing on a proposal to vacate a utility easement at 2407 Willow Lane. This is a motion received and file approved publication.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Second.
That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and for staff comments, we've got Chris Hevy. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Okay. The owners of 2407 Willow Lane have requested vacation of an easement that bisects their property. Just for a quick context, this property is just south of Cedar Heights Elementary. Their proposal is to vacate a 10-foot utility easement. It's actually marked in our, in our records as an electrical easement. And as I said, it goes through Lot 1 of the Ferris Acres subdivision, which 2407 is, is the northern half or northern portion of that lot. Some factors to consider on this, the easement is not needed for public use, and it's not needed for access to other easements or utility lines. The city and CFU do not have utilities within the easement. The area in red to the right up on the screen, that has utilities, the area in green does not, and the area in green is what we're talking about to be vacated. At their July 23rd, 2025 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this case to vacate a utility easement at 2407 Willow Lane, and unanimously recommends approval of the proposed easement vacation. With that, I turn it back over to council.
And Chris, any clarifying questions? Chris at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
If I may, I know in the packet it does show that this addition was approved, but it was unclear from records how it was approved. Is there a signed approval on this inspection or permit, or was this, I mean, that seems baffling to me that we don't know how it was approved.
Yeah, it's a little bit unusual, I would say, in that timeframe. We were probably not as stringent about the way that we were reviewing this. There may have been a follow-up with CFU at that time, but I really don't know, so I'm just postulating there. So, no, we don't, we don't know how it got approved.
So a follow-on, I mean, I'm not interested in having them tear down their garage or anything here, but are we to assume that this, since we don't have record of the approval, that this was an improper build over a city easement at the time?
We have record of the, of the permit to build that addition. So somebody, so it did get approved, it did get signed off, a specific signature on that. We didn't see anything, a reasoning or any, any other record of why it would have gotten approved.
I might just explain a little bit further. Probably around nine, maybe 10 years ago, and prior to that, we asked on land use permit applications that the applicant or the owner indicate where all easements were on the property. So we trusted, as Chris is saying, it was less stringent, they were to provide that. Now that we have GIS, we've mapped all of that, so we no longer ask them to do that. We can clearly see that through the tools that are available to us.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Director. Any other clarifying questions from council? Yep, counselor?
Mr. Sevy, is there a chance that in the future there'll be underground utilities, electrical utilities that would need to use this easement, or is it routed in other streets around there that it wouldn't happen in the future?
Yeah, the entire subdivision has a grid of easements that goes across it that is more than sufficient to cover this area. So this, this really is not, not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions, discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any comments from the public this evening? All right, also seeing none, we will then close the public hearing and look for a motion on resolution of vacating a utility easement at 2407 Willow Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Moves us to old business, item number five, and look for a motion to reconsider resolution number 24195 ordering abatement by the owner of the nuisance located at property located at 315 East Dunkerton Road, such abatement to occur in three phases, with each phase being 30 days in length, and failure by the owner to timely complete any phase of the abatement shall result in an abatement by the city by demolition of all structures on the property at the owner's cost requested by Counselor Cruz. So just quick clarification from this, this was an item we approved at the previous meeting, and as one of the affirmative voting who voted in favor of it the last meeting, Counselor Cruz has requested reconsideration of the item for the abatement specific portion of, if you remember that discussion from the previous meeting. So there is a motion requested for reconsideration on this.
So, Mr. Mayor, it would then require a second?
It will require a second if anyone would like to also open up reconsideration of the item.
I'll do a second.
So the motion is seconded, so then we'll open it up to council discussion on the item. And also, just as we're opening it up, clarification would be if you did vote to reconsider this, it would be essentially to go back to the condemnation committee to review what different abatement recommendation they would bring back. The nuisance was a separate vote, if you remember, so that's not being reconsidered. So the nuisance stands, this is for the abatement plan. So reconsideration of this would be essentially a direction back to the condemnation committee to bring back a different recommendation of an abatement plan for this item. So with that, I'll open it up to council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, counselor.
I wanted to explain why I brought this reconsideration forward. Looking at this almost immediately after the council meeting two weeks ago, I couldn't in good conscience approve of ultimately what may or may not happen, to demolish the structure for someone that has a home right now and would be made homeless, verified by city staff. We have no provisions to help if that were the case. And I did a little research on the parcel report. The property dwelling value is $37,827, has had a new roof permit pulled in 2012, and 2021, there are two permits for bathroom remodel and kitchen remodel. So looking at the state code where it says requiring removal, repair, dismantling of a dangerous building or structure, the building itself is not dangerous, it might be the person residing there may not understand the consequences of their actions, and so on, and I, you got principles of sound mind and body and so on, to look at what is a reasonable outcome if the person cannot get this done in 30 days, and then another 30 days for the second component. So I can't hold this over their head in good conscience to have that harsh of a penalty. So that's why I brought this forward, and I'm glad to see we got a second for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So the discussions I've had with the residents, the resident there and community members, there is interest to, to work on the property, there's interest to abide by the requirements of, of the phases, it's the timeline. We've yet to really gotten good momentum going on, on some very much needed cleaning or clearing out of some of the material. And I've also worked with some folks that are concerned about the after, because there has been historical times, I think Mr. Heath has been involved with the times in the past where the material's been removed only to come back. So we're trying to put a timeline together that has a sustainability for, for the person to keep the material in place. John Benton has bought a fridge and is having that exchange, so you know, the steps like that are being taken. So again, it's not so much as, hey, let's just walk away from this and, and erase the abatement, but give us a little more time, just need more time.
Thank you, counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and Ms. Castle, maybe you want to speak to this. If we get to such time, close to that 30-day mark, where we've seen that there's a plan that's in place, that there's progress been made, there's always room to revisit this timeline. Am I wrong in recalling it that way? Do we have to have it, the situation to be fully abated on the exterior property at the 30-day mark, or is it just a sufficient plan, understanding that this is not the first time with this property that we've been in this situation? So I, I get that perhaps there's a desire to be slightly more strict within that timeline. the situation to be fully abated on the exterior property at the 30-day mark? Or is it just a sufficient plan, understanding that this is not the first time with this property that we've been in this situation? So I, I get that perhaps there's a desire to be slightly more strict within that timeline.
Yep, so in talking to the condemnation committee, we had presented a specific timeline because last time we didn't, and it was just drawn out so long. And so the 30 days, obviously, if we see an improvement, we would bring it back and have a conversation, make that judgment call. We needed to set a timeline because last time it had drawn out too long because we hadn't had a timeline, so that's why we suggested the 30 days.
Which is kind of what I was hoping you were going to say. To me, I, I don't see a reason to go back on what was originally voted upon because we do have an out to this. We're not necessarily trying to be heavy-handed, but there was, there was no progress for an extended period of time, the last time we were in the situation with this. And I don't, I don't know that I see it as the city's role to, for lack of a better word, become the social worker within this process. So I think, I think that sometimes this is the action item that gets the engagement that Councilmember Schultz is talking about right now. It's wonderful that there's already some community engagement with this property. I would suspect that that would probably continue, and perhaps in 15 days since we have the holiday, we'll be having a different conversation about this, which at that point would be day 29 since we passed this. So I think, I think there's always an opportunity to revisit. I don't think there's a reason at this point to stop the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
I had the same hesitations during the condemnation committee meeting. So I mean, having this kind of change of heart or change of mind on this, the timeline was too tight at that point, and that discussion is fair. I think, Chris, we brought that up then, that if we see progress on this. But what popped into my head then is, you know, if you're buying a car and you say, hey, can I get a full tank of gas in it? And you don't get it in writing, you don't have to have it full. It's in writing that you bought the car for the contracted amount. This contracted amount, what happens if they've got it almost done? Or they're making a plan, but they're saying, like Councilmember Schultz is, who's actually boots on the ground conversationally, saying, we want to fix this up, but it's not enough time. Well, we know that tonight, so either let's grant an extension, because there are people rallying around this individual, or let's send it back to the committee and discuss a 60 or 90 or whatever day timeline. I think that's the sentiment I'm hearing from this change of heart conversation, is that this is going to get cleaned up, and actually, we understand the consequences of letting it go again in two years' time, so let's, let's give them the time to work on it. I know the initial step was declaring it a nuisance property. That was the public alert that said, hey, we need something done here. The abatement process, I hemmed and hawed, you remember that? So I guess I'd be in favor of a reconsideration, and perhaps if it has to go back to the committee that we talk about 90 days and revisit, or if we can direct tonight to extend it to 90 days and revisit at that point. I wouldn't be interested in kicking anybody out in the middle of winter either. So there's all that conversation. But I don't know, Attorney Rogers, could we say, give it 120 days? Because last time we had no timeline and it went on for two years. Could we put a timeline on it tonight, or does it have to go back to the condemnation committee?
So, changing the abatement order is not on the agenda, so we have a public notice problem there. And the jurisdiction lies with the condemnation committee to actually bring forward the recommendation.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I'm actually, oh, I, I take Councilmember Latta's point, and I also take Councilmember Schultz's point. I, I think within the next couple of weeks, we could see additional progress, because plans are being made, progress is being made. And we've always had that flexibility, my memory is. And when these issues come forward, when people are showing the progress, then we can regroup, see what's been done, realistically how much time is needed for a further extension if warranted. And so I see little harm in, you know, keeping the deadlines as they were voted on before, understanding that this issue will be back in front of us again. And I'm confident that there will be progress, and I'm confident we'll be better informed at that point to pick a more accurate extension when needed. So, I'm in favor of that, of that route. So I'm not in favor of reconsidering the last vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Thank you, Counselor.
Yep. I'd like to understand, will we see this item before us again? I know a reconsideration has a clock on it, that you have to do within 15 or 30 days after the vote. If this isn't progressing to the letter of the law liking of those that are observing it, we won't see this again. This won't come back before us, the house will be torn down in 31 days. That could happen if they don't get the exterior cleaned up within 31 days. So I just wanted to clarify, why would we see this again? We've already given them marching orders by way of a contract to tear down the house if the exterior is not cleaned up, to start that process. I mean, would we see this again if they don't clean it up?
If I can check quick on that, because I think any movement to actually tear down, there would have to be contracts to come back to council to approve demolition, removal. So nothing could happen without some sort of action.
Okay.
But also, just to, I think, further clarify to that, if we were to say, okay, we're seeing progress and wanted to, staff wanted to bring forward the discussion of the extension, does that need to go through the condemnation committee for a recommendation of this? Or would staff bring back that as an agenda item to look at reviewing that? I don't know, Staff, you could speak to that?
That's a little bit of a tough question. I mean, Mayor, you probably have in mind that I've talked to you about how it's the condemnation committee that has the jurisdiction here, it's staff's duty to bring it forward. So I think in that same vein, then, I would recommend, without having looked at anything, to say we'd need to ask the condemnation committee if they wanted to re-discuss that.
Okay, and thank you, because I want to clarify that. It really is the condemnation committee that has the authority for that. So if I understand correctly, staff would then be able to approach the condemnation committee, request that discussion to bring forward a recommendation on the extension? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you repeat the end of that? You say it was, it was staff, it was staff's duty to bring that to the condemnation committee? Or the committee requesting of staff for an update prior to the 30 days?
I was saying that as, as staff is working with them, they would come to the condemnation committee to have that discussion. But I don't know, maybe that's a question, similar question for staff. If the condemnation committee wanted to get together to discuss an extension, can they request getting together as a group to make that recommendation?
I don't know if I can answer that off the cuff. I mean, we, Mayor, you appoint the condemnation committee, so I don't really have an answer.
That was part of why I asked, just because Councilmember Gamfield was asking this question, Councilmember Gamfield was on said condemnation hearing. So if he has a concern on whether or not we're going to receive an update in that 30 days, does he have, to his question, does he have a mechanism in which to request it prior to our next meeting?
And sometimes what we've done, what the council has maybe experienced is we'll send via the mayor or city administrator a council update. And so council is aware of what's happening, and so if there is a concern, then that communication is prompted to happen so that staff would halt or however the council is directing at that time.
And, and I believe that to be the case. Ms. Castle was going to report back if things were going well. I'm just saying if it, if it wasn't, and we wanted to give a little more time because of the feasibility of 30 days, you know, give them a couple more days to comply, that's why I would be in favor of a reconsideration. But I think we have enough information.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counsel, and then come back to you.
So, we have a 30-day clock that started two weeks ago, so we have 14 days gone by. Our next council meeting is September 2nd, so it'll be the 29th day. To Counselor Lattas' point, do we have a mechanism that we can bring it up at the next council meeting, which will be when we need to do it, or else it's slated for potential demolition? Now, the big thing I've had a concern with here is that we chose to demolish the house if extreme clutter is not cleaned up. Why wouldn't we say that we would forcibly clean up the house? When the house has value, it's, it's shown a history of permits to renovate and keep it going. And then I bring up again the question of the people involved, understanding the consequences of what's happening here. Because to choose a teardown, that's, that's heavy-handed. That's extreme heavy-handedness here, and we can't do that to our fellow citizens. So I think going back to the condemnation committee between now and the 29th, we should get a revision to say, at the next council meeting, let's, I don't know the right way to say it, but forcibly clean up? Or all hands on deck to clean up? Because that's easy to do. And if there's trouble with the kitchen sink draining, what have you, that can be assessed then. But certainly not tearing it down. That's what we put in mind, and I have a big, big problem with that. And I think everybody there should as well. Because where does this homeowner go after we tear down the house? That is a possibility. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor, yep, go ahead.
Could I clarify? I've been involved on a few condemnation committees, and I recall that abatement, you know, we have the abatement proposed or set, but then many of those properties that I've been involved in have actually not been demolished. There is a way that they're not demolished correct. Maybe it's a change in property ownership, but I know there's at least two that I'm thinking of right now, that one I think is back up and going, and the other one I believe is currently being worked on. Isn't that true that we set the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine. So in the time that I have been with the city, we have not actually demolished any houses with condemnation. So in all of their cases, I take back, we have a couple that we are in the process, the most recent ones, but the other ones, we've either had them cleaned up based on the timeline, or they were purchased by other people to clean up, including 315 East Dunkerton previously. It was cleaned up by friends and family, but we are back here again.
Thank you. Can I ask one more thing, as long as Ms. Castle's still here? So the, I guess, and maybe I don't have a question, but I'm recalling not only this current property that's been in front of us just a few years ago, but different properties where I think the key here is progress. So I understand that it's already been 14 days, but, you know, we also have to think about, the reason we do these things is not only for the health of the person there, but also the health of the people and property surrounding the property in question. So I guess what I'm recalling is, you know, we've had a few, one time I think we had like three condemnation hearings in one meeting, and each one was, you know, they maybe, we did have some extensions where there was some family members who maybe didn't even live in the state, but they were coming to help someone. And I, I guess what I'm rambling on about is I recall, there, we are empathetic. I mean, I don't want to, we, we keep saying we're heavy-handed, or I've heard that. And that's not been my experience since I've been on this council. We, this council had, and the condemnation committees at that time have been willing to work with folks. But the key was progress. And so I don't know if we're seeing, if we see progress, then I guess we can have that discussion. But if you don't see any progress at all, I don't know. Do we just keep letting it go? So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Yep, go ahead.
So it sounds like we have an agreement that we will hear back from staff prior to the next meeting on the progress being made. So I'd like to call the question.
So, question has been called really quick before we vote on that. Just wanted to clarify that feedback from staff. One thing is we could have, for sure, staff updates at that following meeting code. Just kind of give that clarification that we'll expect, maybe come back with another.
Point of order. I apologize, but on a call to question, there's no discussion or debate, it's an immediate vote.
I was just trying to clarify that what she said was understood before we move on from it. But, okay, otherwise, we do have a call to question on the floor, so it requires a...
I haven't heard a second yet.
Excuse me, yes.
Fair point.
Second on that? So a motion, second, so it requires two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So that does pass, I believe, 5-2? Is that what you had, Kim? So call the question, does call, so we will move to the vote on this item. And this requires a roll call vote, please.
Can we, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just because sometimes, so the motion is to reconsider. So a nay is against reconsideration, an aye is, sorry, sometimes we've clarified that.
Good to clarify.
Thank you.
Yes, voting affirmatively, voting yes, is to reconsider and send us back to the condemnation committee. Voting no is to continue moving ahead with that expectation that that staff update will be coming, forthcoming. And we do need public comment on this item.
Public comments, Mr. Mayor?
Before we vote, so. Oh, excuse me, no, we will have no public comment on this item because this is a, Attorney Rogers, if you want to give me the terms.
So this was a quasi-judicial proceeding involving only owner and city. And so when we left off, we're past a public hearing. We're now picking up the matter right at the vote, so no public comment.
So just as we had no public comment in the original hearing, we will not have public comment on this one either. So it does require a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, for clarity, we will hear from someone on the 29th? 29th day?
We will have an update from staff on it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait. So...
Three voting aye, four voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Madam Clerk, that motion does not carry. So again, it will remain as was originally ordered through the abatement. And then, though, we will have that update coming from staff as we get closer to that date. So we move to item number six, pass ordinance number 3120, amending the zoning map for approximately 0.69 acres of real estate located south of Quail Hall Lane and north of the new Cedar Falls High School from P Public District to R2 Residence District upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. I was going through the packet, and as I was looking at it, just, I know it's been talked about how the neighbors had been encroaching upon the U and I property. But as I was looking closer at the current high school, there's an area, and if we could pull up maybe out of the packet, page 28...
Just go ahead and keep going.
There is a yellow zone that is encompassing, I believe there's 77 acres that the high school, that the school district bought before a vote to even build a new high school. And so I'm not sure if this yellow-coded where it is P, and it does have a note here, rezoned property from P Public to R2 Resident Zoning District, RZ 25-001. And I'm wanting to just find out if that is going to be then part of the 77 acres that's going away from the school as well.
I don't believe this has any relation
Okay.
to that separate school zone.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that as I was looking at this. I thought, boy, if that goes unnoticed, it's going to be just like Diane, and then no one can even speak up for her, which is pretty ridiculous.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any other public comment for this item tonight? All right, seeing none, requires a, well, back to counsel, any conversation, additional discussion?
See my previous comments on this vote?
Thank you, Counselor. Otherwise, requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3121, amending chapter 10, garbage and refuse of the Code of Ordinances relative to disposal by business establishments upon its third and final consideration. Do we have motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that moves us, item number eight, pass ordinance number 3122, amending chapter 23, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking prohibited on specific streets upon its second consideration. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name again, please.
Kim Jordan. When we have constructions of like State Street and nearby streets, it's very difficult for homeowners to find parking, and that's an ongoing Cedar Falls concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there any other public comment for this item this evening? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Moves us to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll, or excuse me, a voice vote in a single motion without any separate discussion unless someone from the public or council requests it be considered separately. I am going to pull item number 13. Are there any others to request from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Number 11? And the other from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve items nine through 14, excluding items 11, 12, which has been removed, and 13.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Move to item number 11, receiving file the resignation of Jack Baumann as a member of the Human Rights Commission. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council before we open up to public comment? Seeing none, we'll open up to public comment, please.
I would just like to thank Josh publicly for everything that he has done and to stand up for the different people that are like Diane and needing an extra voice and maybe not ever getting a phone call back here at council. It's, it's very disturbing, the fact that we can go so many different times and not receive it. Public concerns are unaddressed.
This really needs to be related to the resignation.
Yeah. I just, I really appreciate that because he is stopping the five minutes and trying to extend people that may need extra. Thank you.
Thank you. Just name and address, please.
T.W., I'm Chair of the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission. I just wanted to stop and say, and thank Jack for his contributions to the Human Rights Commission's, Commission over this last year or so. He is leaving us to pursue his higher education, and that is why he is leaving us and to do more human rights work. We appreciate him. That now gives us two openings on the Human Rights Commission, and we want a lot of people to apply, anyone who is interested in doing the work. We want people to apply. Our next event is tomorrow at Three House, 6 o'clock. It's a Love Our Community event. And then our next meeting is next Monday at 6 o'clock at the Safety Center. So, just thank you again, Jack. Thanks, John.
Thank you, T.W. And second that for Jack. He wasn't on the commission long, but he was very active with the group, provided a lot of good insight, recent graduate, very passionate about some other projects as well around student or youth councils and a lot of things. So, still a very active member of the community, so appreciate everything he did in a short time with the group. Otherwise, any other public comment for this item? All right, seeing none, bring it back to council, any public or council discussion on the item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Move to item number 13, look for a motion to approve the application of vape time 7:04 Main Street for a cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. And so, before we open discussion on this, I wanted to bring some information to council. I know some of these applications have been discussed in the past. Last year, we've been discussing, looking at some restrictions on vape, vape, tobacco in certain areas of town. So, as you know, last October, we had the referral to direct staff to evaluate options for an ordinance change relative to restricting vape, tobacco, CBD, and potentially eventually THC sales if it were ever approved, noting several public health concerns around both the proximity to certain institutions like schools and the proliferation in certain areas of town. We previously discussed the necessity of council imposing a moratorium on the issuance of new permits for the sale of tobacco, tobacco products, alternative nicotine products, and vape products, while the city studies how to mitigate negative health effects of tobacco and related products, including potential ordinance amendments or regulatory measures. I have not brought forward a proposed moratorium resolution to date because of the uncertainty of the timing of that process. However, I can now state that a nine-month period of study, consideration, and potential adoption of ordinances, ordinance changes, or other measures is realistic, and therefore, a moratorium is now appropriate. So, therefore, I've directed staff to bring forward a moratorium resolution to be considered at the next council meeting on September 2nd. In the meantime, if council would agree, I would recommend that council postpone consideration of this application and any additional new cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permit licenses in the immediate term until the September 22nd meeting, so that regular city council meetings, so that council can consider and hopefully approve on September 22nd a moratorium on any new tobacco and related permit applications pending study, consideration, and potential adoption of zoning ordinance and amendments or other measures, understanding that this action will not affect existing permit holders for those similar permits. So, with that, I open up for discussion and see everyone's thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to postpone a decision on this until that September date?
Second.
So, motion seconded, and any discussion on postponing consideration of this, and any additional ones received in the immediate term to that 22nd date, for the intent of bringing a moratorium at the second meeting to be considered.
Mr. Mayor, so basically tacitly adopt the moratorium now?
Well, it would still be up, so something to consider with Attorney Rogers is that the council would actually need to consider the moratorium, and that's where we would draft up exactly what that moratorium is. Looking at about a nine-month period, is what we discussed, giving enough time for the consideration of what those ordinances would be, but still limited enough time that it keeps us actively working on this and in scope. But that would still need to come forward for consideration. If council did not adopt that moratorium, then this would be back at the 22nd meeting for adoption.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Here's the, I've seen this before in the past, and this is not related to vapes, it's not related to any, the form of business, it's not related to anything. But if this is otherwise a perfectly legal application for whatever business wants to exist under our current ordinances, then where I have difficulty is sort of playing with the process and saying, we'll delay, when in the absence of the idea that we, you know, don't want this to happen and want the moratorium to take place, this would be rubber stamped. I have a concern about the message that for business owners and developers or whoever is out there that we can kind of act in the absence of those ordinances or official acts and on a moratorium and deny what otherwise would be a legal application. I don't care if it's a liquor store or whatever. You don't have to like the business, you don't have to want it where it wants to go, but if they follow the rules, I don't, I'm not comfortable with pulling the rug out from underneath them. I'm confident that we'll have a moratorium going forward, but I, I am not comfortable with this process right now. The other thing that we don't know, quite frankly, is because you just said, we don't know the form that that moratorium would take. And so, we have no idea that it would affect this particular application, and yet we're denying these applicants the ability to move forward with the business that is otherwise perfectly legal under our current ordinances. So, that's the issue that I have with it, not the ultimate issue on the placement, what happens with the moratorium. It's just, I, I, I don't like what I perceive as the unfairness of this action and it's singling out, so.
Thank you, Counselor, and just a few comments on that, because this is something thought through a lot and reviewed, because I understand a lot of the concerns and shared many of them too. I know, one, for certain that the moratorium would address this specific instance based on a lot of the conversation around what we've been looking at, and I do believe that, one, it isn't for this, also reviewing any others that come in similar, but also knowing that this has been an active conversation within this body, and we had an official referral last October to look at this. And so, I do believe there's been significant consideration. I wanted to bring this forward and certainly understand the concerns, and, but why I wanted to bring it to the group for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I understand your point. I beg to differ. We have no idea what that moratorium will look like until seven members of this council vote.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, Attorney Rogers, in the past, when we have had, I guess, one of the shops that we're discussing close to a school, you gave us counsel to, it would be a bad idea for us to vote that down because it would open up some, some doors to some legal issues for the city. Now, if, you know, hypothetically, we move forward, we don't postpone this vote, and we move forward, and it gets voted down, are, are you still in the position that we've created a problem for ourselves?
So, appreciate the hypothetical, but I, I'm going to decline to answer that. But I would be happy to sit down and visit with you about all the legal angles sometime after the meeting.
That sounds like a legal answer.
And a skilled one at that.
A skilled one.
Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
I'm not going to repeat it, but I have the same thoughts and concerns as Councilman Hawbaker. I, I look forward to the discussion, the future discussion, to see what, what we end up with. But I guess that's not going to affect my vote at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other thoughts, discussion from council? And just so everyone understands my reasoning too, one reason, I think this especially, a lot of the discussions around the concerns were about proximity to certain locations. This is in a location that is within 500 feet in close proximity of a school, daycare, public library. So, there, there wasn't consideration of a lot of public health concern around some of the location of these. And again, that doesn't necessarily affect the decision piece of that, but just wanted to explain some of the reason why I think there was strong consideration of discussing this tonight's meeting. Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, open up any discussion from the public? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. It's a very addictive substance, and it's got a lot of sites around here that are enticing children. The College Hill is one. We've discussed that. But until you have a child that may think that social pressure is okay, and you're not going to become addicted to it, you have no clue as to how it pulls kids in, and then it begins to own them. And there are some extreme highs and lows, and it's, as a community, I think that we should really kind of try to figure out an approach to say that we, we do like bikes and wrecks, and we appreciate our health, and we want to keep our hospitals, and we want to support outdoor nature and the planting of new things, but we do not want to toxify and create a next generation when we already have a baby boom generation that's probably not going to have as much in their healthcare systems as they need if we don't really wake up and look around and make some capital improvement, harsh decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there any other public comment on this item tonight? All right, bring it back to council, any additional conversation?
Just for clarification, voting on the postponement?
Yes, we, so what's on the floor right now is the voting on the postponement until the 22nd with the plan to bring forward a moratorium on any, in these types of permits, that definition at the September 2nd meeting. So, with no additional conversation, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
So, that motion does carry five-two, so that will look to them, bring the item back on September 22nd, pending a discussion at the September 2nd meeting about a moratorium.
Mayor, mayor, before we start?
Yeah.
We have some confusion about September 22nd. So, that's not a council meeting?
Excuse me, did I have my turn?
So, I just, the 15th would be the night.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, I just didn't want to make sure you were thinking we were having a special meeting or if there was some confusion about that. Sorry I didn't catch it before the vote, but...
Calendars are hard. Let me double check. So, we'd be on the 15th, correct?
15th.
For the council meeting? Is it a friendly amendment for the 15th?
To clarify, I did say that September date. That September date was.
So, that September date?
No year, no day. Mayor, we probably better clarify it.
Do we want to do a quick revote on that for the date? So, we'll do a quick revote just to clarify that that is the September 15th date to bring that back at that second council meeting. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Five-two. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Attorney Rogers. Well, yes, yes, thank you, Jen, for keeping me on track.
Credit where credit.
All right, that moves us to item, excuse me, let me get to the correct page. That moves us to the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Are there any items from the council?
Mr. Mayor, number 16, please.
16? Any others from council?
22 and 23. 22 and 23.
Got them. Any others from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve items 15 through 24
So moved.
of the resolution calendar.
Second.
Exclus, excuse me, excluding items 16, 22, and 23.
So moved.
Second again.
Motion seconded and requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am clerk. That motion carries. That moves us to item 16, look for a motion on the resolution approving and adopting a revised job classification for the position of payroll technician.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and open for council discussion. Counselor?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, didn't get an opportunity earlier in the week, so I apologize for that, but I wanted to just think, one item in here, we're requiring a valid driver's license for this position, and I didn't see any other rationale that this position was going to be driving anyone. So, I guess, from a non-exclusionary stance, I'd like to ask, why does this require a valid driver's license? If this person can walk and do the job, that's discriminatory. Can we remove that? Secondary to that, it looks like we're removing some items from the responsibility, and while we are adding several items in, I don't see them as a direct offset, and we're reducing the number of years for qualification for this role. So, I just want to have staff clarify, where do we send these out to verify the payroll band that this should be in? I don't see the pay band is changing, but it seems like the job is going down in responsibilities, thus the pay might need to go down as well. Those are the two questions I love to have answered.
Director Orr Bailey, if you'd like to, good. Thank you.
I will take the driver's license question first. So, this position, we do have multiple admin, admin assistant positions throughout the city, which currently key time cards right now, so they kind of help out this payroll technician. So, this, this person or this position could be responsible for going to that different locations throughout the city to train admin assistants on how to key time cards, use a payroll system. So, that's one piece of driving that this position might have, to go out to those locations and conduct that training. Additionally, for the finance duties that are kind of assigned, this person might have to run and do bank runs for deposits as part of their financial responsibilities, taking deposits to the bank. And then, as far as the duties, so we did remove some HR duties, but we are also adding in some finance duties. We did keep this, we felt it kind of fell within that same pay ba, pay band. We are going through that pay plan study right now with MGT. Should this position be approved, the job classification be approved, we would see, have them evaluate and see where that falls within the pay ba, pay band as well as we move forward with hiring this position.
Thank you.
Because it would be a new structure from our current structure, possibly.
Right. Is there any way we can evaluate this pay band with MGT before we approve and hire? I don't want to give someone a demotion as soon as they get hired.
They did provide us the scoring threshold for how they would score different positions, and we did look at that for this position, and it fell within the same pay band right now. So, that's why we left it as is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am clerk. And now move to item 22, look for a motion resolution setting September 2nd, 2025, as the date of public hearing and proposed amendments to chapter seven, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Amendments National Code Electrical Adoption and National Electrical Code Amendments. Just a reminder, this is setting the dates, so we won't be discussing the content of the items.
Second.
Motion seconded, and Counselor Cruz?
Actually, I withdraw my request because setting the date versus discussing the contents.
Yep, okay. You want to do the same for 23, then?
I misunderstood.
Well, I guess, actually, since we polled them, we'll vote on them anyway, but, but any other discussion, and council has time on the date? Seeing none, any from the public? And it is just for setting the date of the public hearing. Okay.
Correct.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive. I would object to setting the date. This needs to have review from, from the stakeholders that are involved with this, rather than it being rushed to a public hearing. rather than it being rushed to a public hearing without having the policies gone through. I know I spent four hours just today going through it and I couldn't muddle my way through it because there's so much. And a lot of the information is not there, but I would ask that they postpone it until we can have a review, whether it's internally or whether it's through the subdivision task force, however that comes out. But that's why I would delay it. I'm not saying it's wrong or right, but there's a lot in there that affects the cost of building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Any other public discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, bring it back to counsel for any consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
I do echo what the Speaker just said, and that was kind of my thought that it's not ready to have a date set to discuss it. We have a task force coming up reviewing developer process and so on, and this ties directly into that. This should be dated after the task force is complete. So I agree with the Speaker, and that's part of why I wanted to pull it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. One thing, I was just pulling up here the actual, which items are included on this. Because one thing, the items on this one are specifically relating to, if I get my two, I know we have two separate items, just making sure I have the right ones. This one is updating our code to make sure it matches the state required definitions of an ADU. So this is matching what is required by the state and what was approved. I believe at a previous discussion to bring forward for the changes to this. Director Sheets?
I wasn't sure why you mentioned ADU.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, definition of sleeping room, my head jumped to that when we were doing that. Sorry, definition of the sleeping room, but then also adopting the updated version of the building codes. So there is consideration that gets put into this from staff, they review it. And this is not, a lot of the specifics in here, the type of thing that, under my understanding from what we've intended for the development task force to be really reviewed, is those types of specifics. Excuse me, broadly speaking, we'll address a lot of those. But I would say hesitate to pause a lot of these things because there has been considerable discussion and thought put in from staff on moving these forward. Again, open up for additional conversation from counsel. All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Move to item number 23 and look for a motion on resolution setting September 2nd, 2025 as the date of public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 15, nuisances of the Code of Ordinances Relative to nuisance defined, certain acts, conditions declared as nuisances and responsibility for abatement defined. So a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Motion seconded and open for council discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
This one here, I definitely think needs more discussion. Brought up earlier with the, what item was it? The Dunkirk property, Dunkirk Road property. How we define nuisances and there needs to be much more time put into this than what would happen here. And I think it should be postponed, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion from counsel? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan, I would also agree, there was a whole committee of the whole meeting and it touched pretty much on the same thing to some degree and.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any other discussion from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to counsel, any further conversation? Otherwise requires a roll call vote, please.
Oh, sorry.
Four voting aye, three voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Moves us to allow bills and claims, do we have a motion to allow bills and claims for August 18th, 2025? Motion and seconded, I believe. Any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. This packet is ridiculous, trying to go through everything. But there were a couple of things, I was looking for the demolition cost that we still haven't heard, but you had mentioned that you will get to. I noticed that we had the Tiff Bond project to the UniDome renovations, a payout of $2 million. I believe that that was a council discussion and it was supposed to be a drop to maybe 1.5 million because of tax. It was affecting the Cedar Falls taxpayers. So that was one concern. Let's see. It was interesting that the Ragbri solid waste use for the Little Cooley Porta Pots was 8.01 tons. I believe that might have gone out to the bio swale that's at the Bell's Farm for the Sartori Trust. And that was a cost of 520.65. Not sure if DNR has had a chance to look at that site recently. And then there's quite a few things in here for the sewer that we are manhole risers, different things that are creeping up throughout the whole season. And just in August, we had $27,848.27. And then this was kind of interesting, we had an outside agency historical survey of $850. And we seem to do a lot of, I didn't pull Resolution 19, but with Waters Edge, how many times are we going to look at a maintenance on that? We don't have maintenance for the river project and I'm sure there's going to be logs and stuff like that. So how often do we get surveys and different expenses, redrawings that come up and then affect those? So there's a lot of stuff and just trying to find a little thing or trying to understand and not have the background or not being able to be at the table when a lot of these discussions are made is, as a taxpayer and a citizen, it's kind of frustrating. So I appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Again, I know we've said this multiple times throughout the years, that that is the goal setting process, the public input we get to setting the priorities. And then we work with staff to, based on the budget that we approve each year, move forward with the expenses within the approved bounds. A lot of these, all of these expenses are within that. I did want to touch on quick, just for the public clarification on the UNI funding. It was, again, staff, correct me if I'm wrong in my numbers. It was 3 million total is what was approved and that was reduced, or excuse me, yeah, the 3 million total, we had already transferred. Jen, give me the numbers here, all. Too many numbers in my.
So I think it was at 3 million and there was discussion that it went down to 2 million.
Yep.
And so there was one payment that was due to them once this new fiscal year started. So that's why the payment's being made.
Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
Any other public comment for this item tonight? All right, seeing none, bring it back to the counsel, any additional conversation? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, any council updates in their announcements? Hearing none, moves us to council referrals, so move to item number 26, to look for a motion on incorporate language into our city ordinances to define what a vulnerable person is and use it in the context of protecting a citizen's property rights and aid and code enforcement interpretations. This was submitted by Counselor Cruz. And so would require a second for anyone that would like to open this up for conversation. Again, one thing I would like to preface with, I know I've discussed with some of you of, please be cautious in this conversation about ensuring if we discuss it, that it focuses on the content of this, not specific individuals that have been involved in projects in the past, so. Is there a second to open this up for conversation?
I'd second it, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, okay, so we have the motion there and a second to discuss it, so open for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'm going to keep it real simple, to quote my favorite movie, "This is out of our element." We are not social workers, nor do we have a social worker. There are teams in place, although maybe not properly funded these days, but to help with situations like this. I appreciate the thought of caring for folks. But this is not what a city council or city staff is meant to do. This is a, this is beyond our scope. This is usually, for this type of language, it would be a medical team, a social worker, a nurse, a physician or a nurse practitioner, a physician's assistant. I mean, this is not what a city does, this is beyond our scope.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Really quick, yep, go ahead, Counselor.
I would respectfully disagree in some parts of this. Yes, there are components such as the basic activities of daily living, which does take medical guidance to determine if a person is, say, ready for nursing care. But there's other components of this, such as the sound mind and body, which is pretty simplistic. You have to understand that the person you're talking to, whether it's whatever enforcement we have with our codes and ordinances, do they understand the nature of a legal act? Can they comprehend the extent of their assets? Do they recognize relationships? And in particular, do they understand the consequences of their actions? And I bring this up in the context that we were talking about earlier. It's like we, the abatement committee said, well, we're going to tear down the house. Well, you know, and I'm like, wait a minute. You know, there's easily definable criteria that we can evaluate if that's the appropriate response. And it's important, these are well-vetted components. Transportation, managing finances, ability to shop for themselves, meal preparation, household, cleaning and house maintenance. Okay, that's a big one. Managing communication with others, managing medications. It doesn't take a rocket scientist, a medical team to determine these things. And I think there should be something written in the code in the proper language. Mr. Rogers could do so and see what other committees do. But I think we need to protect ourselves as a city when we're sitting here voting to demolish a building potentially or forcing any other activity. And there's other alternatives that are less damaging to the person's well-being. That's why I bring this up, because in my profession, that's what we have to do every day. I'm not a doctor, I'm not any kind of social worker. But it's our duty when someone comes to me with a financial investment scheme or idea or concept that I evaluate as a person of the right mind to make the decision to do that. Do they have the finances to do so, can they follow up on it? And I got to protect that person. And I think it's our duty as council to protect our citizens to do so. I mean, I could give you all kinds of language and we get training every year within our profession. Anybody in finance knows this, that you have to know your client, you got to protect your client and give what's in the best interest of the client for advice. So we are able to do that as a council, as city staff. We don't have to be medical professionals. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep, go ahead, Counselor.
I actually have a question for Counselor Cruz, since it's your referral, I guess my question's related to the scope of it. Since you're wanting to define a vulnerable person related to property rights and code enforcement, I assume that means all property rights, which would include the tenant relationship as well, right? They would have a leasehold, is that right? So we were talking about property rights. So you would want us to revisit our code as it relates to the landlord-tenant relationship as well?
No, that's not the scope of this. That's the outcome. It's when somebody walks in your office or you're defending a person potentially charged with a crime, you have to determine, can they stand trial? It's a concept that you have to do, you're not a medical professional that I know of. You're an attorney, so can a person stand trial? It's a similar concept. Does somebody in a situation in our city, are they able to comprehend the dilemma that they're in? And these criterias here, predominantly the instrumental activities of daily living or the of sound mind and body. A sound mind and body is a legal concept. And you can Google it and I'm sure you know it, but I'm not going into the weeds of Landlord-Tenant Act 562A at the state code or anything, how we apply it to the city, no. I'm looking at, is a person able to comprehend the dilemma that they're in? That's probably the simplest way to say it. In our business, we call it a vulnerable person. And so that's, I'd like to see some effort put towards this. Comment from Mr. Rogers, if he would like to shed light on your thoughts. But I think this is important, it's very important. Because we're proposing to tear down a house instead of proposing to, you know, do whatever. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel?
My emphasis was not on whatever definition Mr. Cruz has of vulnerable person. It's property rights are property rights and that includes a lease as well as whether somebody owns the property. So in my opinion, the referral includes all of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Respectfully, Councilmember Cruz, you're really flippant in the way you're describing this and saying that it's not rocket science. You're correct, you're not a social worker, you're not a medical professional. Nor are any of us on this body qualified to provide a recommendation on someone's mental stability, mental abilities, any of the such. We are not qualified to do that. And Attorney Rogers, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're alluding to essentially a dependent adult situation, that's very clearly defined within Iowa code already.
Yes, I believe it is. I don't know where to start. I would say it's unworkable for a lot of reasons as just mentioned. But the basic problem here is attempting to create some sort of fiduciary relationship by the city involved in enforcement action. When the city is trying to uphold the ordinances, yet at the same time provide fiduciary advice to a person, that's a built-in conflict of interest. And what I would venture to say, whatever determination that, I couldn't make the determination, nor could any other staff member make a property determination, the person knowing that conflict of interest probably wouldn't accept our advice anyway if we were to give it, which I'd caution all staff members not to give. I think it boils down to role and this vastly expands the proper role of municipal government.
So, Mr. Mayor, based on those comments, I'd like to call the question. Second.
So we have a motion and second to call the question, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I believe that passes 6-1, so we'll move straight to a vote on this. So all those in favor of moving the motion forward as is written?
Aye.
And all opposed?
Nay.
That motion does not carry. So it moves us to item number 27, look for, again, a second on this. We have a referral to include an exclusion in the zoning ordinance to allow accessory buildings if there is no house on a city lot. The exclusion would be if a house is removed, damaged by tornado or other storms, tore down, burnt down, the pre-existing accessory dwellings, or excuse me, accessory buildings, I apparently got dwelling units on the mind. Accessory buildings can remain. So again, we have this submitted by Counselor Cruz, is there a second to open it for discussion?
Second.
We got a second and open for council discussion? Counselor Cruz, if you want to, yep, go ahead. Councilor Cruz, if you wanna, yep, go ahead.
Yeah. Everything that I've been taught and trained over my years as a financial advisor and consultant, it's preservation of wealth and enhancing wealth, saving taxes and so on. I find it anti-that to say that if by some stroke of bad luck, whatever it might be, the primary residence of a house has to be destroyed, removed and so on. And then here we say, oh, because of that, and let's say I don't have the means to rebuild my house for several years or what have you, and I may not want to. That I'm, the city's gonna force me to demolish a perfectly good three-stall garage and some outbuildings and so on. I find that just so contradictory of preservation of wealth and what we try to do to, to promote that idea. And, that's why I'm bringing this forward. Now, I understand if you have a vacant lot, you're not going to allow, the city's not gonna allow a garage to be built because it doesn't fit in the residential area, why are you building a garage? But for circumstances that are beyond a person's control, and then the finances to rebuild a house maybe are beyond their control, elderly parent, all kinds of things could be coming into play here, that you're gonna tear down everything. And I find that very disturbing. So I'm asking for this exclusion, it's, it's very narrow. It's not going to proliferate a lot of situations, I don't believe. And I'd ask for people to give this consideration for a discussion by staff to build into our code. Thank you.
And if I can just ask for a clarification, Councilor Cruz, when you, in this, you have it worded, if there is no house on the city lot, are you then essentially referring this to specifically residential lots?
Well, presumably so. I mean, commercial property, I don't know what the scenario would be if a house is tore down. That's not applicable, because in a commercial property, you can have a garage. It, it would be in a scenario where the garage, outbuildings beside the house are being told by, the owner of the property is being told by staff, you have to tear it down or you gotta build a house. And, you know, you could put a timeframe of six months, I think I read something on that. Planning a house can take years, getting the finances together, insurance claims, what have you. And you may have a situation where the neighboring property owner may want to buy the property and then now merge it with them and have a garage for themselves. So, I don't think we should be so heavy-handed to destroy value in a property when there's already misfortune that a person lost their home. I, I, I think I'm answering your question, Mr. Mayor. I don't know that it would apply in any other besides residential, but I could be wrong.
Okay, thank Counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Can we start with, is that, and I, I'm sorry, I have to, it was, the referral was in the packet, but is what the counselor's saying, in fact, true? And I'm thinking, there are properties that were, you know, there's several properties, or at least I can think of two, out in the North Cedar area that were just, I'm assuming that it was destroyed by flooding, but the garages still stand. So is, are we, is that even, is what the counselor's saying the reality of our current ordinance? Can we start there?
Jamie, would you, or Stephanie comfortable just kind of speaking to that quickly, what's required by current ordinance and?
Well, it's common in a zoning ordinance, especially in residential zones, to regulate that an, that you're allowed to have accessory structures to the primary, to the principal use, the principal use being a house, a residence. I don't know the situations you might be thinking of, but I can think of another one in the College Hill area where the residence hasn't been there for maybe at least two years. And we've talked with them about the use of that garage. And actually, when they applied for the demolition permit, asked them for a timeline of replacement. So that's kind of an ongoing, kind of monitoring that property, is it being used for something? But in most cases where we've seen, we've had some fires on some houses and/or other damages where then insurance came in and that house was replaced, you know, within a year or two. So, I would say it's certainly an exception to see where we might have some accessory buildings on a residential lot without a primary structure. And take those on a case-by-case basis.
To kind of speak to the process, it seems like we've been pretty accommodating and flexible to work with those homeowners if we were going on multiple years to try and address, knowing it's a significant financial cost. But it seems like that's something we're pretty accommodating for, working with residents to try and find a solution to. Any other?
Mr. Mayor?
One sec, let's see if there's anyone else to comment, yep.
I guess I'm, I'm of the opinion that if this is a solution in search of a problem, we don't need to discuss it. But if we could make sure that after research, if anything needs to change, that planning and zoning would be approached for those necessary changes and leave it at that to simplify this process. If it's not needed and it's a non-existent exception, great. But if there are some of those cases, let's allow some leniency and have staff get that over to P&amp;Z to review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, Counselor.
Without being specific, the, without being specific, there is a glaring example that could come into play very shortly. Examples that Ms. Sheets explained. Ms. Dunn said North Cedar has got garages standing on flooded lots. It's out there, apparently it's not uniformly enforced. I want to get away from the fact that, and it may never happen, but if staff doesn't like a person, a person is being belligerent and what have you, but they have the property rights to keep their accessory dwellings, the garages and what have you, to someday down the road build another structure or sell it to a neighbor for some value, split a lot in half between two neighbors, what have you. This is a solution that is there for a potential problem. It's, it's not hyperbole.
Counselor, quick, I have to ask politely ask, please refer or avoid referencing vaguely that staff has grudges or unless you have a specific action or thing you can prove that took place, strongly recommend not to make accusations or vague allusions that staff place favorites or hold grudges against individuals.
I can appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, but it's subjective on the decision. Because we got properties in North Cedar that are still standing, and that violates our code, apparently. Why do they, why are they allowed to stand? So, human nature is what it is.
Thank you, Counselor, yep.
I'd like to call the question.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to call the question, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, so for the vote on this item, we have included an exclusion in the zoning ordinance to allow accessory buildings. Oh. Oh, sorry, I guess I should open up for public comment before you. Because if we call the question, do we need to open public comment before we?
We typically have public comment on a referral.
It's a referral.
Kevin, Attorney Rogers? Have we usually opened up for public comment if we're making a vote with action on referral?
I don't think we have.
Okay.
But I don't know when you would invite public comment, if it's in the middle of council debate. I suppose you could call the question, that gets seconded. And before the vote, possibly? This is new territory, I'm sorry, I don't know. Certainly, it's important to get public input on stuff like this.
Yep, so just to err toward giving the time for public comment. We'll open for public comment and then come back for the final vote on the item. So, any public comment on this item tonight? Just name the address, please.
Bob Manning, 2908 West Third Street, Cedar Falls. To have the councilman make the suggestions in the last two referrals seems like what the, the voters in our community don't like. This is really struggling to make any sense out of this and to bring this forward to this body to have to make a decision on a case where there's a vulnerable person or, or a building burns down. I financed.
Keep it specific to the content of this, this request for the motion.
I have financed two houses, the same house that was destroyed by a hurricane 10, 12 years ago when I was in banking. And they came in and, and built the same house. And that was, insurance paid for a lot of it, but not all of it. And it was an expense to them, certainly, and, and certainly they were displaced for a while. So, I mean, we're getting so small on, on trying to deal with things. And yet, we've got a counselor that doesn't take care of his own property and he's.
Excuse me, Counselor, I need you to keep it specific to this, not straight outside of that.
I just wanted to get that of note, thank yous.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. I disagree. I believe that it is every council's member oath that they do take to try and sort things out using the STAR method, the situation, the task, the action and the result. And when you can't sleep with your decision or you're second guessing and considering, I think everything needs to have a resolution and discussion. And I believe in the vulnerable. I believe also that we have the Cottage Row, where there were many times throughout this last year where we were allowing the neighboring person to go ahead and mow for something that was a flood buyout. We have a rental to the fire station out in North Cedar, which has a property on it and it's not being staffed, except.
Ms. Jordan, I need you to keep it specific to the content of this referral, please.
Yeah, these are. And then there's also the demolition, giving when you have a hoarder in a neighborhood and you give them.
Again, that, that's not relevant to the discussion here. We're discussing specifically a ordinance that would allow accessory units if a primary building were torn down. So do you have any comments specific to that?
Palisades would be a broad picture that we could use, where there might be something left, but they need the option to go in. And that could happen here. We have had tornadoes and things and flooding. So, we do have that in our backyard. And we do need to address the homeless, that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone else for public comment on this item tonight? All right, seeing none brings it back to the group for no further discussion, just a vote at this point. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And that motion does not carry. That moves us to executive session, so look for a motion on executive session to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.51J and to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation pursuant to City Code Section 21.51C. Do we have motion approved?
Some move.
Second.
Motion seconded. Quick for everyone's information, this would be a vote to go into executive session, does not end the meeting. Once it does, we would go to executive session and come back to adjourn the meeting, but no further action would be taken. So is there any discussion from council on motion to go to executive? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, all those in favor, or excuse me, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we will adjourn to executive session. Again, we will return out here to adjourn the regular meeting, but no additional business will be discussed at that time. Thank you, everyone.